Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, and it's August 10th, 2015. It's my honor and privilege to call a regular meeting of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Welcome, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Ms. Garros, welcome.
Thank you.
To our viewing and listening audience, we welcome you. Thank you for tuning us in and for being here, those in the audience. So, welcome. Our agenda for today's meeting is as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission. Item three, approval of the minutes from the July 27, 2015, regular meeting. Item four, a public hearing, application from Heritage Bank, N.A., for a planned unit development amendment to allow a technology manufacturing use in a B3 general business zone located at 13795 Frontier Court. Item five, another public hearing, application from K2 Real Estate, LLC, for a planned unit development amendment to allow a permanent exterior display area at Northern Tool and Equipment Business located at 12205 River Ridge Boulevard. Item six, another public hearing, application from Douglas L. Larson for a conditional use permit to allow an accessory building to exceed 500 square feet for the property located at 14904 Viewcrest Lane. Item seven, updates and then adjournment. Any changes to the agenda, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. See, there are no changes, so do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Levy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moves us to item two, the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission for the next year. Each year around this time in August, we elect a Chair and a Vice Chair, the two officers that we have on the Planning Commission for the upcoming year. For me, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity as Chair for the past year. I've enjoyed my work as Chair, and I would like to thank Commissioners for helping to make my job easy and fun. Those of you who are here, past Commissioner John Corey, he served, well, sometime during the past year as a Commissioner. I'd like to thank him, too. Ms. Garros, thank you so much, your staff. Please convey to Mr. Slenya my thanks for his support and cooperation during my year. To the City Council and all the staff of the city, thank you, too, for giving me the privilege to serve. Now, we have, we'll have nominations for the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'll take the privilege and the honor to nominate our current Vice Chair, Mr. Jim Bradrick, to be the Chair for the next year. Motion that I move that we nominate, I move the nomination of Commissioner Bradrick for Chair.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Levy. Any other nominations for Chair? Going once, going twice, and going for three times. Commissioner Bradrick, you've been elected Chairman of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Okay. It's my honor to hand over the Chair to Commissioner Bradrick.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. I would like to nominate Steve Benke as...
Oh, I...
I'm sorry.
Open the nomination.
Oh, I'd like, I'd like to take nominations, and I would like to nominate Steve Benke as the Vice Chair for the current year.
Second. Any other nomination?
I forgot, I'm in charge.
Yes.
It was moved and seconded, and we take a vote.
Is there any other nomination?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any, any other nominations? This is new for me. Any other nominations? I would stand for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you. The third item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the July 27, 2015 meeting. I was not in attendance, so I have no feedback. Commissioners, do you have changes to the posted minutes for the July 27 meeting?
Mr. Chair, I have two changes that I would like. The first matter was, we have the recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city says Levy moved and Workman seconded a motion to approve the planning unit development amendment. It should be to recommend to the City Council that...
Which one?
This is the one, public hearing, the Costco one.
Costco, okay.
Also, the one, the one before that, and that's, should be the same. The Planning Commission recommended the State Council approval.
Deb, does that make sense?
No, 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 no changes, those are...
Okay. With no other changes, I stand for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and the motion carries. Charlie Crichton would be very happy with us that we caught that. Item number four this evening is a public hearing for the Heritage Bank, N.A., application for a planned unit development amendment to allow a technology and manufacturing use in a B3 general business zone located at 13795 Frontier Court. And Ms. Garros, this evening is presenting. W is gonna stay over there all night instead of walking back and forth?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Should we bring your Chair?
I know, and note, I am shorter than the, than the equipment. That's okay. We do have the applicants for all three applications that'll be considered this evening are here in the audience, and this first application will be a public hearing, and it's an application for Heritage Bank, N.A. There is a planned unit development existing on the property that dates back to, I believe, 2000, and this site was part of a larger planned unit development, kind of identified here on the screen, indicating basically all the properties from Frontier Court over to the grocery store on the corner. So there were a number of properties, and the types of things that were associated with that original planned unit development were related to the exterior materials on the buildings and the various types of uses out there. This particular graphic doesn't show that, but when you drive by, you'll note that the buildings do have similar types of materials and, and architecture throughout the PUD. So that was basically what that earlier planned unit development was for. For this application, we have a new business to Burnsville. They are interested in the subject site, which is the property at 13795 Frontier Court. It is a corner lot front on McAndrews Avenue and Frontier Drive. What they're proposing to do is really to, to purchase the building and to occupy the entire building for their business. They currently have a business in Apple Valley, approximately 25 people. They're looking to expand their operations and looking at this site in Burnsville in order to do that, and anticipate growth up to approximately 40 employees in the near For the site itself, there are not many changes involved in terms of the parking, exterior of the building, et cetera. Most of the changes will occur within the interior of the building, and the planned unit development is specifically to allow for technology and manufacturing type use within this building. The underlying zoning is B3 general business as the other adjacent properties, and with the planned unit development, you have the opportunity as the Planning Commission and City Council to take a look at the use and see if the use makes sense within the overall planned unit development and other businesses within the area, and from a staff perspective, we believe that this will be a very nice fit for this particular application. Some of the Commissioners will recall that we did something similar to this for a manufacturer for the Caliber addition project that was in the old Best Buy building, very similar type of thing, except this is probably less intensive as a manufacturing type use than that one that was approved earlier, no, last year, I believe. What I want to do is just go through, in terms of the, the PUD benefits with this particular use, there are not going to be any outward changes, if you will, that this is a manufacturing facility. As a matter of fact, with the type of manufacturing that they do, it's on a very small scale, small, very technology-oriented product that they put together. They do not have major, a lot of major traffic in terms of truck traffic or customers coming to the facility. They manufacture their product specifically for individual vendors and then will normally have a couple of boxes, two to three small, almost paper-sized boxes for deliveries that are, that are taken from the site on a daily, daily basis. So even less intensive than what you have with the copy center next door to the site in terms of, you know, materials and people coming and going. Really, the, the staff and the employees that work there will be there. There are plenty of parking spaces, well in excess of what is required for the minimum. And in addition to that, really, the major changes that are going to take place is that the offices, the office components of the building are going to be changed to accommodate the, the manufacturing of the parts that the applicant can further discuss with the Commissioners. It's a clean assembly type use. What they're proposing for changes relates to primarily this garage structure is the only outward, really, change that anyone will notice. They're looking at the three overhead doors that are indicated here, two on the, on the ends and then one in the middle. These are currently the roll-top doors. They face the side of the next building, so this is not visible from either of the public streets. What they're proposing to do is to replace those doors because they're not insulated, and what they would like to do is be able to utilize this area for part of their production work, compressors and other assembly type uses that they need to have to make sure that their products are dust-free, et cetera. So what they're proposing to do is to take those overhead doors, which are not insulated currently, and to replace them with a metal panel-type material that can be installed on a temporary basis in the event that they would need to at some point in time come back to use a metal door. That will make the, those, the three panels will be insulated, and the material is a metal-type material. We have asked and added a condition, recommended a condition of approval of the PUD that the material will just be submitted to staff prior to the building permit for the project so that we can make sure that it is something that's consistent with the ordinance. In terms of the overall amount of metal that's permitted per that side of the building will be approximately 9% now, 10% is the minimum, so, excuse me, maximum, so it will still conform with the ordinance standards. Staff has taken a look. We did not include the design guidelines with this particular application because it's really very minor changes and the, the PUD is really for the use as opposed to the exterior materials, but the materials we do anticipate will be consistent with the overall architectural In addition to that, they are proposing, they do have an existing wall sign, which is made of metal letters that they propose to install at this site. It'll be, I believe, less than 20 square feet, it's a 12-square-foot wall sign, which certainly meets the ordinance standards, and there's also a free standing sign for the PUD, and there will be an entry for Celadon Systems on that sign as well. All of those conform to the ordinance requirements. This graphic just shows where the overhead doors are, the three garage door openings. They do periodically do have some truck, trucks coming for deliveries of machinery or other type of equipment approximately once a month. They can still utilize this area, no issues in terms of site circulation, parking, no additional landscaping required. There's only one small change in terms of lighting, and that's just basically lighting to illuminate their new sign that's proposed. Everything is within the requirements of the ordinance, and with that, staff recommends approval of the planned unit development as presented with the one condition, and that condition being that prior to the release of the building permit, we have the opportunity for a staff review of the infill panels to make sure that they do indeed meet the ordinance. We have no, no really question that they will, it's just a matter of having the material to take a look at. With that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant is here can address the Commission as well.
Commissioners, let's start with questions of Ms. Garros. Commissioner Benke.
Yep.
Yes.
Just to be clear, parking, obviously, it's in excess of what's required now. It's also in excess of what's required at a 40-staff level?
Yes.
Okay. When you are calculating percent metal, are you ignoring the current garage doors?
No, that would be including the current, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think, given some of the issue we've had with color, that it might be wise for the Commission to suggest that the doors complement that portion of the building that they're contained in, as opposed to simply, staff review, basically to give them a little more direction, that, that, obviously, it's part of the gray building, part of, it's part of the gray part of the building, so instead of somebody coming along and deciding to match the brown in the gray, I was just thinking it might be wise to voice that.
Certainly, if the Commission would like to do that, taking a look at color, the current garage doors, as you can see, are the white color, but if you want to do that, then certainly within the purview of the Commission to do so.
So then, should they be here and do real well and grow and want to move to another building, if somebody else comes along, do they have to come back to us to change the panels back to garage doors?
No. As a matter of fact, for this application, again, the, the panels and the garage doors, that's something that can be done with a simple permit. It's just that we were reviewing the planned unit development, and that was an unknown, so we included the condition.
Quite good for that.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, I think we can have the applicant come up and, to Commissioner Benke's suggestion, we can clarify that what the intention is and whether they can match the color of the panels.
Hang on. Any other questions, Commissioners of Ms. Garros?
Thank you, kind of nailed my question on that one.
Welcome. Can you give me your name and number, or your name and address for the record?
My name is Brian Root, and I live at 13... What do I live at? Let's see. 13655, I was gonna give you my address of the business. 13655 Duluth Drive in Apple Valley, Minnesota.
Thank you, Brian.
My name is Bill Funk, and I live at 23690 Jersey Court in Lakeville.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for coming to see us this evening.
Yep. So...
Gentlemen, I did look at the panels online, and that is the business I'm in as well, so I was just curious, with the variety of panels there, and we have had an issue with color on some of the more recent approvals we've gotten, given that the building is gray on the side, there are two colors, there is other colors, obviously, on the side as well, the bronze, just trying to clarify what the intent was for the use of the panels, color-wise.
Probably best to answer that, Bill. We, I mean, we can basically have any color we want.
Right.
So we were still looking at a number of panels, since there's not a lot there, considering, you know, large projects. Some things are not unaffordable in small scale like this, so we're still not exactly set on the panels, but they're gonna be, you know, foam-filled insulated panels, essentially gonna look like a garage door panel. It's just not gonna move.
Okay.
On rollers. We'll take them out manually when we bring a machine in, and we'll stack them back in there. It's easier to seal it in temperature-controlled environment than a roll-up door. It's really hard to seal those, so that's why we want to do it. But essentially, it's gonna look to anybody driving by like a garage door, and we can make it any color we want. I haven't sent the chips yet, but, you know, the plan, ultimately, we, we didn't like that gray part of the building, anyway. We thought the whole thing should match.
We think it's the ugly part of the building, frankly.
Well, but there again, if, if you're gonna paint, then obviously, you're gonna want whatever to, to match up there. I mean, it appears you're also changing garage doors as well. I realize I'm sort of getting beyond the purview of the PUD for the use, which, by the way, I think it's an awesomely distinctive building. I think it's great that you guys are, are moving into there. It's great to have new business in town, obviously. I think all I'm just trying to do is understand a little bit better what the intent is for the building.
Well, bottom line is, we can leave it looking almost exactly like it is now, if that's, you know, what's preferred.
No, I'm, I'm looking more from you, what, what the intent is.
We wanted to try and stain the, the block to match the brick, if it's possible. I talked to a few people that do that kind of thing. Unfortunately, they're too busy to get it done in our timeframe. Imagine that.
Yep.
So it's probably not gonna get done, so we probably leave it the same, and probably just have the doors white at this point, but somewhere in the future, you know, a year from now or whatever, when we can get somebody in to stain it and then repaint the doors to better match the rest of the building. That's our intent.
Sure. That makes sense, actually. Very good.
Yeah, yeah. Like I say, we think that's ugliest part of the building, and we want to make it a little bit more pleasing to the eye.
Well, it'd be great to see quite a bit, it'll be great to see quite a bit more activity at that building. It's been quiet there for a long time.
Quiet there a while. Right, right.
Commissioner Levy?
The, these doors face the copy center next door.
That's correct.
Excuse me. Are each of the bays behind the doors separated so that when you put in the insulated panels, they, you're in an insulated space, or is it one big, long garage that putting in the insulated panels isn't gonna do a lot for keeping that whole garage warm?
There's a divider, where, you see where the passage door is in the middle?
Yeah.
There's two-car garage on one side and then a three-car on the other. The three-car garage is where we're gonna put our sensitive machines that need temperature control. On the other end is where we're gonna have our compressors and a dust collector and stuff like that. So the compressors make a lot of heat themselves, so, you know, we really don't care as much there about the insulation, but the, the three cars, we're mainly where we want it insulated, but, you know, we're gonna, we're probably gonna replace the roll-up door on the end there, just so everything matches. It's easier to do that than trying to match something that's already there and, you know, that wear problems and stuff. Sorry.
Any other questions?
I had one, I had written, the dust collection, there's no external dust collection, correct? It's all self-contained in that bay?
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
It doesn't collect much. We dump that thing like every six months.
That's true.
What we do is really tiny stuff.
Yep.
Barely see it.
Yes, Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, you're working ceramics.
Yeah, and metals.
Yep. That's right. Yeah, we, we manufacture very precise components for semiconductor manufacturers, anybody that designs or builds semiconductors, whether it's Intel or Qualcomm, I can promise you that you have components in your phone that were tested using our product, so...
And you mentioned it, did I hear you say heavy metals?
No.
No. Just, you know, metals for support, basically, to hold the ceramic where it needs to be.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, some of our cutting tools are about the size of your hair.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for choosing to operate in Burnsville. We appreciate it.
We're really excited. We are really excited. If we could move tomorrow, we would.
If there are no other questions of Ms. Garros, we are due a public hearing, so at this point, I would open the public hearing and ask anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this measure to step up and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Benke, I, I do think that, as I read the, the, what their staff, from what the staff recommended in our, in our background, it says, "Prior to release of building permits, the application will provide the color of proposed garage stall infill panels for staff review and approval. This will ensure compatibility." I think that gets to where you were going. Correct. Okay.
Yeah, it does, quite honestly, and I think that the fact that they are thinking down the road and changing color and things, and that white with the doors, you know, I, I don't want to direct that, but yet, I, I just wanted to get it out there because of the other building issues we've seen lately that perhaps could have used some more detail.
Okay. With that, unless there's other discussion, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Chair, I would move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council approval of the PUD amendment, subject to the following single staff condition as written.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benke and seconded by Commissioner Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and the motion carries. With that, we will move on...
City Council meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. That will go to the City Council on August 18th. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item number five is, is also a public hearing. It's an application for K2 Real Estate, LLC, for a planned unit development amendment to allow a permanent exterior display area at Northern Tool and Equipment located at 12205 River Ridge Boulevard, and oddly enough, Ms. Garros is already at the podium.
Yes, we're here. Thank you, Commissioners. This item is really a minor amendment, and it's something that is, is really due to changes that the city has made in terms of zoning of properties and changes to our zoning ordinance, and the reason for this is that there was a PUD agreement associated with the Northern Tool building upgrades that were done a few years ago, and in that, they had some deviations that were needed at that particular time related to the use of metal materials on the building exterior, some signage and, and other small deviations. So there is a condition, it's condition number eight within that planned unit development agreement, that states that basically they have until this year to come in and reduce the size of their exterior display area. When this PUD was approved, there was exterior storage in the back. What the applicant did in, in addition to all of the building material upgrades on-site is they actually installed a privacy fence along the back to screen the storage area, and then the display area is really this area that's adjacent to Cliff Road, and what the applicant had requested at the time is to have a display area of about 7,500 square feet, and the maximum display size for an industrial property at that point in time was 600 square feet. So therefore, that condition was added, that the, that this would need to be changed to reduce the square footage back to 600 square feet by later this year. What's happened is that over the years, the property has been rezoned, and I'm just showing here, this is actually giving you where the exterior display area is. It's running through here, it's already, there is a gate, there is a fence of chain-link, vinyl-coated, black vinyl-coated chain-link fence and landscaping that was installed as part of the PUD. There have been a number of changes. One of them was the adoption of the North Gateway Design Guidelines, which took place after this PUD was approved, and in those design guidelines, there were also recommendations to rezone properties, and primarily the parcels on the east side of Interstate 35W and along and primarily, the parcels on the east side of Interstate 35W and along the, right along the freeway. So, this site, and also the site that's current Walmart, and a couple of other properties, were changed from an industrial designation to highway commercial designation, the B-4. In the B-4 zoning district, there is not a size limitation to exterior display, and therefore, since the city had actually gone through and changed the zoning in the underlying district, and then also, our ordinance has been changed so that we no longer have that maximum size, we just have the requirement for a conditional use permit for those. So, what the applicant is requesting, that merely their PUD document be amended to delete item eight, and to allow them to continue to use this site for exterior display, as they have the past five or six years. The site has remained in compliance, we've had no issues with the, with the site, and the applicant is here to address the commission if you have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros while she's here?
Sure.
Just one. Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair, it's a very simple matter. This, this application is as a result of changes that the city has made, and I think, I don't see any problem with it. I, I intend to support it, and, okay, something that's necessary for them to continue doing business.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Benke?
Yeah. Deb, just to clarify, I agree, I think it's just bookkeeping on our part. My only question is, is, does deleting the, the PUD condition make more sense than simply adjusting it to allow for the current 7,500? Therefore, any future change would simply come back as a PUD amendment again? Or is there, is this the right way to handle it, or?
From a staff perspective, we believe we can delete the condition. The site plan still remains as the, as the planned unit development. So, that is already kind of identified or inherent in it.
Because a big part of the PUD was, or the, was about a sunset.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions? Nope. I don't have, I don't think we have any questions for the applicant, so, unless the applicant wants to step up. Okay. All right. I think this is the right thing to do. Northern Tools, a great community partner. This does require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this matter to step up to the podium and give us your thoughts or comments on this matter. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and at this point, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the PUD amendment to allow a permanent exterior display area at Northern Tool and Equipment located at 12205 River Ridge Boulevard, with the one condition, all other conditions of previously-approved PUDs shall remain in full force and effect.
So, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benke.
I have a question on that. Commissioner, you mentioned the removal of condition eight specifically. Do we need to have that reference in the motion that we present to the council?
As a mover in motion, I think that's the application states that, and that's what we are recommending approval for.
All right. With that said, we have a motion, it's been moved, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That'll also go in front of the City Council on a week from tomorrow, on 18th. Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is also a public hearing. It's an application for Douglas L. Larson for a conditional use permit to allow an accessory building to exceed 500 square feet for a property located at 14904 View Crest Lane. Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Lawson had made an application for a building permit a number of weeks ago, and we had reviewed that and identified that, in the zoning district that his property is located in, which is the R1, single-family zoning district, that the maximum size for detached accessory structure is 500 square feet. He lives in an area of the city that actually was platted and developed before Burnsville became a city. This area is primarily dates back to the mid-to-late 1950s, early 60s. Most of the development has occurred then. The lot sizes are more in line with the R1A Southwest Burnsville area, if you will. The applicant does have a large lot, it's about an acre and a half, and it is within a single-family residential neighborhood. They back up to the railroad, which the railroad tracks has not been active for a long time, but the railroad does still own it, and it is still possible that at some point in time, they may decide to start utilizing those tracks again. The graphic up here is the pictometry, just to give you an idea, we've got the home, again, which was built in the 50s, is located on the near-to-View Crest Lane. They've got an existing driveway, and the accessory buildings are approximately in this location here. This, hopefully, this graphic, you can see a little bit better. The, this is looking from, again, here's View Crest Lane, so we have a different perspective that we're looking at, the existing driveway, the existing home, and then, these are the, the existing buildings that the report identifies. They're older buildings, the applicant has, you know, had them for some number of years. They're not, they're not weather-tight anymore, and just not of the quality that he feels comfortable using, pretty much to say. So, what he would like to do is to remove those buildings, and then to, in its place, or in their place, construct a new detached building, which is shown in this location. There is a proposed carport also, which would be attached in this location, and there would be a new driveway that would be installed, blacktop driveway, back to the site. There are, the property has topography such that, basically, you come from a high point in this location, and then you go, it goes downhill to the next property. So, you basically have a situation with one neighbor that's up here, Mr. Lawson's lot is, is in the middle, and then the next lot is, is further, further down. So, in terms of screening, you really can't see this location if you're driving along the street. Again, to the rear, you have the railroad, which is actually built up higher than the ground elevation, so that is all screened. You can't see anything, any of the homes further to the west. And there are a large number of large mature trees on site, so really, the site is very well-screened from the adjacent properties. What the applicant is proposing to do is to construct a new building. They would take down the two existing buildings, and the, they are looking to build a combined area of 1,378 square feet. This is a little bit different than other buildings that we've looked at because of the carport, and we do need to include the carport as part of the accessory building, which is, that's just the, the way that that has been reviewed through time for carports, is because they do have the ability, you can, with a permit, basically, just enclose those, and those become part of the structure. So, it's always been the intent with carport, to take a look at that square footage that way as well. In terms of the other properties within the neighborhood, there are other buildings that, again, were developed in the 50s, much before a lot of the standards that we currently have in effect came into being. There is actually a larger building, accessory building, to the south of this, a couple of lots down, and this is something that, from a staff perspective, we feel that this particular site and what is proposed is a reasonable application. It will be a very nice addition to the property, and it will be something that the applicant will actually be able to utilize, as opposed to what's there now, which, you know, he's indicated. And I didn't want to go in either. So, it's, it's just one of those things where it's, it's served its useful purpose and time for something, something new. In terms of the, the site itself, the engineering department will review the building permit. They did not have any comments, per se, at this point in time, for the application. Hard surface driveway is required, and one's being proposed. What they'll take a look at, at the time of permit, is the actual construction activity, mostly in terms of erosion control, just during construction, because we do have the topography of the lot. With that, Mr. Lawson is here this evening, and can address the Planning Commission if you have any questions. The, oh, here we go. Should address just quickly, on the right-hand side, we've got the elevations, they're proposing to use hardy lap siding on the structure. It'll be very similar to what is, what the house has, and there will be a nice pitch roof, and we think this will really be a nice addition for the applicant, and something that makes sense, considering the neighborhood that they're located in. With that, I can stand for questions.
Commissioners, what questions do you have? Commissioner Workman?
I apologize if you touched on this, but can you, there was something regarding an underground storage area, that's for small storage, or that's not an elevator system or anything like that for a vehicle?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, what that is, I'm sorry, this, on this plan, it doesn't show that plan sheet. I do have that. It's actually going to be underneath the main part of the building, there'll be like a full, full basement, if you will. I mean, there'll be an underground area that has storage capabilities as well, and what they will do is to access that, they'll put in a lift for that, so that they can get the materials down to that bottom, bottom elevation. I do have a, floor plan did not get included in here. Not sure if I can get this.
It was in our background.
Oh, did, okay.
It was.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
The footings and the pre-stress concrete floor were all in our background.
Thank you. This graphic shows it here, we've got the, whoops, wrong side. Basically, on the left side is the floor plan. Now I've lost it. There we go. On the left side here, in this location, this is approximately where the, the lift location would be. And again, it's just a full storage, storage that's, they can utilize that for the basement, for lack of a better way of, of defining it. But the building itself really is just 14 feet tall, so it's going to look like a one-level, one-level garage.
Thank you.
Mr. Benke?
I didn't hear this thing.
Okay. All right. I have, since we have no other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry. Would you? Okay. Could we have the applicant come up?
Yeah, the applicant, yeah. It's the one that's looking.
Could you please give us your, your name, and I think you're, I think we know what your address is, for the record?
It's Doug Lawson, 1494 View Crest Lane, in Burnsville.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. That's a lot of space. What are you storing in there? I don't understand what the use is and how much traffic might be generated by having this.
There'll be no, not very much traffic. It's just for storage of, I have some four-wheelers and that, and, you know, everyone, as you know, have grandkids or, or toys, Christmas. I mean, I had, years and years, we built the house in 55. My mom and dad used to store all the stuff in the attic. You go up there and, and you get down there, and all the stuff's melted or ruined, you know, from the heat in the attic. You always have picnic tables, or, you know, pulling chairs for odds and ends. I have a lot of shovels, rakes. I used to do landscaping. Not anymore, but just odds and ends. So, it's just a lift, no more than probably a thousand-pound lift, to go down, pick, get items that I need. I have chainsaws. It says storing them upstairs, and taking up the space upstairs where I like to have my vehicles, I can store, I, you know, I use a chainsaw, what, every six months or twice a year, in the fall and spring, you know, things like that. Small items, and that, it's not a very, not to go, I mean, I'm not going to run down, up and down for a bolt every time I need to get something, you know, or a washer, and that, that stuff would be upstairs.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, I appreciate your visit. Those of us that don't have that big a lot are very jealous of.
Well, I do 2,000 square feet level, like it used to be, before you changed the ruling back in 82.
Yeah.
I think it was, it'd be 2,000 square feet level, but I've tried to consolidate it so it's not spread out my yard.
We, we thank you for reinvesting in the city, and you're really close to the 1A Southwest Burnsville where that zoning would have been.
Well, this is my second, my parents bought the house in 1955, and I'm the second owner. And my son will probably be the third, you know?
Well, thank, thank you very much for, for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, to step up and give us your thoughts. And seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and at this point, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Levy?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the CUP as presented, and to allow the proposed 1,378-square-foot accessory building to exceed 500-square-foot standard, subject to the following condition, that the proposed accessory building shall not be used for business purposes.
Moved by Commissioner Levy?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That'll also go to the City Council next Tuesday on August 18th.
I do have a question for you.
Why don't you step back up to the, to the podium?
I was wondering if you could waive the fees. What happened is, the reason why it must be 1,000 square feet is because, on February 2nd, I came here to the City Hall, the first week in February. I went to the front desk, asked them for the information, she told me to go over to the wall. I picked it up, I seen R1A and R1. I walked back over, asked the secretary, or the, the one in the front desk, I asked them, what zone am I in? And she told me to go to the phone and dial four, something, I can't remember what the number was. And I asked the lady, and she told me, I gave her the address, my address, and she told me I was R1A. So, then, the second week, I had the blueprint guy out, designer, come out on the second week. After everything's all done, I found out I'm in R1. I was misled. I was not, I didn't have no intention, I went to the max what I, I was allowed. So, I'm asking to waive the fees.
But, I, I appreciate the situation you're in. That's not something we, this body has the ability to waive. The staff, the staff could definitely recommend a process for you to go through, but as a non-elected body, we don't have the ability to waive fees or make changes to fees.
Body has the right to do it.
City Council does.
You are the City Council.
We're the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission.
So, I appreciate, I appreciate your, your situation, but at this point, that's not something that we can.
So, the City Council's on the 18th?
Yeah, show up at a meeting, and you can, and you can talk with them.
All right.
Thank you very much, sir. Once again, thank you for investing in Burnsville.
And just for Mr. Lawson, too, with the, the City Council, we, this will be on their regular agenda, specifically to talk about the waiving the fees, so, that will be, that will be next week.
Okay. Which moves us to item number seven. Does Commissioners have any updates?
Mr. Chair, I don't have an update, but I would like to congratulate you for being elected our chair, and Commissioner Benke for being elected vice chair. I know both of you well, and I know you, your stewardship will be very successful. As for the other Commissioners, I think I can speak for them, too, to say we pledge our support to you and wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Garros, do you have any items for updates?
I do, just a, a couple of short ones. Just to let you know, for the Swinski variants that you considered at your last Just to let you know, for the Swinski variance that you considered at your last meeting, the applicant ended up selling the property and asked for the item to be withdrawn from the council agenda, the day of the council meeting, so that application was withdrawn.
That was the one where the three lots?
Yes, the three lots into two, yep, exactly. So just, so you know what the result of that was. And then I do have a draft agenda for next time, on August 24th, handout for you. And we have one item, and it's housekeeping amendments. So you know in advance, hopefully it will not be a real long meeting, but we do have a number of changes, yes.
Sometimes they can be.
These are minor, minor changes, so hopefully it will not be that painful.
The background for this information will be somewhat extensive.
Okay. A book.
Yes.
Ms. Garros, the Swinski variance, so by, by removing it from the council agenda, there is no action?
Correct.
And because there's no action, there wouldn't be a denial on the record that would require them a timeframe for a resubmital.
Correct.
So literally, there, something could be in the works for another idea for them.
The applicant that, or the individual that owns the property now, is the one that had the building plans that we included with the packet.
Okay.
So they are in the process of having the property surveyed and plan to build one home. They do know that we will require them, before we issue the permit, to combine all those three lots under one PID number.
Okay. Which actually is appropriate, I think, for that area, so very good.
And then, the final thing that I have is, I would also like to thank former Chair Singh for his work, it's, you have, this was your second tour of duty as the, as the Chair, and I was privileged to spend time with you, you were, you bring a tremendous amount of background and information from your past history, and early on, when I first started to be interested in the commission and watching TV, I thought, I want to be just like him. He's, I appreciate the way you think about applications, so I sincerely want to thank you for everything you've done in the past year, and I look forward to having you on the commission.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
With that, I would stand.
Is it possible to address the commission previously discussed agenda items?
Yeah, you can, you don't have. Sure, if you'd like to step up to the podium and give us your name and information.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name is Jim Giebel, I live at 1701 Victoria Lane, which is directly across the street from Agenda Item Number Four, on the Technology Manufacturing Use. And I guess I have just questions, one, I'm not sure of the process, you know, as far as, was there to be a notification of neighbors? Was that usual process, or?
First of all, I'm going to, I'm going to refer to staff to talk about the process that happened, and we did have, we did hold a public hearing in reference to anybody that wanted to speak to this, to this issue, and there was no one in the chambers that chose to step up, but I, I just wanted to clarify that point.
This evening, yes.
Yes, we did. But with that, I'm going to defer for a moment to Ms. Garros, and she can tell you how the notification process happens.
For planned unit development amendments, the city notifies, sent out a card to all property owners within 350 feet of the exterior boundaries of the lot.
Okay.
And that identifies, you know, the date of the public hearing and time. We do also have the applicant post a sign on the property with the case file number, so that if people drive by, they can call the phone number and just refer to what that case file is, so we can give them that information. And then, notice of the public hearing is also published in the city's newspaper, I believe it's done twice, once at least 10 days before the hearing.
And I saw the notification on the door last night, as my wife and I were walking the dog.
Oh, okay.
We're within 350 feet, that's a football field and 50 feet, I know there's five neighbors on Victoria Lane, I talked to them all last night, if they knew anything about it, nobody received a card.
We can check, but that is what we do, I'd have to check with Jane Hovind, our planning assistant.
It's County Road 11, is between us, and Victoria Lane is Little Frey's Road.
Ms. Garros can certainly get you her card, and you can have a contact, and she can bring you up to speed as to how the notification and what all happened for this public hearing.
That would be, I guess, good, I mean, because this is, just came together last night, as far as the neighborhood is concerned, because nobody was aware of it, we aren't looking for it in the paper. And we probably don't have, you know, an issue with it, but we know nothing about it. And again, I apologize, late from work.
And I would, I would invite you to, tomorrow, or the, or very early, at the end of the day, you'll be able to bring up the video online from the Burnsville website, and watch the entire discussion.
So the process going forward would be what, it'll come before City Council, just for approval, and that's it?
Yes, the City Council meeting next week, because it was a unanimous motion, they will have the application on their consent agenda. If it's something that you would like to have pulled, you know, if you have a chance to take a look at the hearing and the background information, then that can be done, you can come to the meeting. It would be good to, just if you could contact me and let me know, that way I can advise our city manager, and she can have the council fill that item for further discussion.
And then also, if you go to the website, you can bring up all of our background information, you can see all the information that we had, all of that's published and is out there for everyone to, to review, so you'll be able to pull up all of that information.
Okay. Just, I guess, sensitively, we fought, I don't know if you guys go back to the late 90s, with, there was going to be a McStop at that area, and I raised $40,000 at that time to stop that, and we succeeded, obviously, and had things built that were accommodating to the neighborhood. And again, you know, it looks like this could be fine, but, you know, we, we weren't notified, I guess that's number one, I mean, we would have been here, the neighborhood would have been here, I guarantee you, we have a lake association, it's very involved with Lake Almagnet, and we would have asked questions, I mean, what are they making, what are the hours, and, you know, I mean, there's just many things, and, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak now, and I know it's probably not going to mean anything, but...
No, sir, I think a lot of your questions will be answered if you review that information, and the videos online, usually the very next day.
I think almost tonight, even.
Yeah. It could be up tonight, yeah.
So if there are issues with the neighbors, City Council would be the place to bring that up.
Then on August 18th.
Yep. And I do have, on the table right outside the chambers here, are my cards, so, yeah, if you.
Grab one.
Yeah, if you want to grab one, and then give me a call in the morning, and I can get you the list of, you know, who the notifications went out to, and, and we can go through, I can try to address any questions you have, and, and see what you want to do when this goes.
Well, we're zero for five for Victoria Lane, and we're as close as anybody, I mean, there isn't anybody closer, but they went out, they weren't received.
Okay. Well, she can get that information to you.
I'll look for that.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Appreciate giving me the, the time.
With, with that, the final item on our agenda this evening is adjournment, and I would, moved by Commissioner Levy, second by, second by Commissioner Benkey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.